Good evening. Welcome to the Norfolk School Board Meeting, Business Meeting for Wednesday, August 21st. A quorum is present to conduct the business of the school board. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Bassin?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Martin?
Present.
Buffalo?
Present. Mr. Jordan, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely. I'd be glad to. All, please rise and face the flag.
Silence your cell phones.
Thank you, Dr. Martin, and silence your cell phones. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the business agenda?
I move that we adopt the business agenda as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. May I have a second?
A second to that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Bassin. Any discussion? Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Bassin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye. We'll move over to 3.05 Superintendent's Report. Dr. Birdsong.
Good evening, Chairwoman. Members of the board, staff, members of our community. Each month, we provide a video for you that demonstrates all of the hard work and efforts of our teachers, building administrators, and central office leaders. And this month's video will display the first day of school, which is Monday. It feels like we've been to school for about a few months now. It's only been a couple of days. We had a wonderful opening of our schools. And I want to thank our teachers for doing such a fantastic job of greeting our students and being prepared for them. Our building administrators were making sure that structures and systems were in place to support our classroom teachers. And of course, central administration for all you did in the preparation of opening schools for our kids. And so, lots of wonderful things shown in the video, all aligned to our wonderful strategic plan. So without further ado, Channel 47, please play the video.
High school students taking advanced placement courses got a head start on the school year by attending the AP Summer Academy at Norview High School.
AP Summer Academy is an opportunity for students who will be enrolled in an AP class in the upcoming fall to kind of experience what they will be getting into when they start taking the class.
Well, it really helps you utilize your skills, and it shows you more skills, as in like reading styles, note-taking styles. It's really helping me for later classes that I'll have to do because in my freshman year, I have to do AP Human Geography, and that's going to help me a lot.
Some of our rising sixth and ninth grade students took advantage of a unique opportunity called the Transition Program that allows them to get familiar with their new school before the school year begins. Students toured their school, attended classes, met school staff, as well as did some bonding activities.
I have had a lot of fun. It's been really, all the teachers have been really nice to me. I've had a great time.
I think it's been pretty welcoming. They've showed us around, and they've stopped at every place just to show us what each club has in their activities, or just kind of different classes that we could choose to go to.
A celebration took place at Norview High as the summer school graduation took place. In front of an excited crowd, 41 students from all five high schools walked across the stage to the sound of great cheer and applause. Congrats to all.
Nearly 300 Norfolk Public Schools administrators spent two days preparing for the upcoming school year at the Summer Leadership Institute at Gramby High School. Superintendent Dr. Sharon Birdsong kicked off the event with some straight talk about the division's successes and struggles, and an inspirational message for administrators.
Stay focused. Stay focused. Focus on our focus. Do whatever it takes to provide a superb education to our students, no matter what. They deserve the very best.
Guest speakers delivered valuable information and inspiration to administrators, while smaller breakout sessions enabled them to learn together and from each other.
I just feel like when you are with your colleagues, you get to share your experiences and you get to hear their experiences. So it's the collaboration. The collaboration is the key. Just like we want students to collaborate, we need to collaborate. And it's just so powerful when we all get together and we can share our successes and even our struggles.
New Teacher Institute took place at Norview High as the district welcomed over 400 new educators at the three-day event. Messages from speakers, breakout sessions, and meeting some of our community partners were some of the ways to help this year's group get ready for the school year.
We try to bring like a very strong message so that the teachers know our expectations right from the beginning on what we want for a caring community for our students, just to ensure that they succeed.
Norfolk Public Schools Department of Human Resources had a record turnout for their Associate Teacher Job Fair at Crossroads School. Principals interviewed potential candidates who had a college degree, a love for children, and a commitment to obtaining their teaching license.
Norfolk Public Schools administrators were invited to a special operations day that included visits to school nutrition, school plant, and transportation. These interactive tours enabled directors and staff members to explain exactly what their departments do and how they support the overall mission of the school division.
This really adds to my knowledge of Norfolk Public Schools. So it helps me so when I'm contacting people in different departments, I have a richer understanding of the process. So I think this is very helpful. Just how they support your school and making sure that the students get everything they need, you really need to take advantage of the operations day.
Over 120 U.S. Navy sailors from various Norfolk area commands donated time to help with tasks such as moving desks, preparing bulletin boards, cleaning, and sprucing up guardings to get our schools ready for the upcoming school year. Thank you to the U.S. Navy for providing volunteers to help in 15 of our schools this
The staff at Southside STEM Academy at Camp Estella hit the road just before the start of the school year to visit communities where their students and families lived. They brought with them valuable information, school supplies, and the opportunity to interact with teachers and staff.
This is an event that we call the Cardinal Community Connect, our initiative to build that partnership between our school and the community that we serve. We are so excited about the upcoming school year. Our staff is excited. We know our parents are excited. Our scholars are also excited. And so, we're passing out school supplies to make sure that we set our children up for success.
Well, this is nice. I didn't have to drive too far. This is less school supplies I'll have to get, but I'm probably sure I'll still have to get some more. And they get to meet their teacher before they get to go to school, so it's good.
I think it's pretty nice. They made it very easy for all families to be able to come out and meet all the teachers and everything that the school has to offer. So I love it. It's much better.
Norfolk Public Schools and the City of Norfolk hosted the Second Annual Unity in School supplies and other helpful resources were given out to help students and families be prepared for the new school year. Thank you to all of our community partners that participated.
Let's make it the best year ever, no matter what.
Norfolk Public Schools started on August 19th. Have a great school year. Join us September 12th at Ruffner School for our Equity and Excellence Learning Centers Expo, as Norfolk Public Schools showcases new educational opportunities at these four schools. Activities include speakers, food, conversations, giveaways, and more. Transportation is available. Learn what our EELCs are all about and how they can help our students. For more information, log on to the website or scan the QR code.
For the complete stories and more information about what's happening in Norfolk Public Schools, visit the NPS homepage and click on the YouTube link.
Thank you. That concludes my video report.
Thank you. You're right, a lot went on, and it's just the three days.
Wow.
All right. With that said, Ms. Tanner, citizen comments?
Madam Chairwoman, for today's citizens' comments, we have eight speakers. Today's speakers signed up for the public comments before the start of today's business meeting. If you would like to provide public comments, you are required to state the agenda item or items or topic you are addressing prior to providing your public comments at this meeting. When your name is called, please come forward to the speaker's podium, state your name, and whether you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools, or if you are employed by the district, and state your agenda items. One person is to speak at a time. If you are requesting representing, excuse me, a group, state the group's name. You may ask your group members to stand in place to be recognized. Speaking time is limited to three minutes. A timer is set with an alarm that will signify the end of your speaking time. State your position and give relevant data. Avoid saying anything that identifies students or personnel information about individual employees. Personnel, disciplinary, and confidential matters may be addressed to the school board directly via email at schoolboard@npsk12.com. Comments should be addressed to the board and not addressed to an individual member. School board members do not respond to public comments at the time they are given, and any written statements or supporting material should be given to the clerk. Chairwoman Buffalo, our first speaker for this evening is Precious White, followed
Good evening, school board. My name is Precious White. I am a junior at Booker T. Washington High School. And I am here to address something on behalf of our choir program as the group's president. Due to some unethical tendencies in developing the entire program, it led us further to invest in research and analysis. And when all of the facts are lined up and examined, one thing you will see clearly is how people at our school prefer the installment of a new choir teacher that does not have a music education degree and have never taught a choir, over the simple and quick reinstatement of our real choir director, whom has more qualifications than any music educator at Booker T. Washington. Not only this, but I, as of other 25 eyewitnesses on April 23rd, 2024, around 6:00 PM, it is factual to state that our choir director is innocent. Although, there has been numerous occasions where our principal showed his true colors, the choir has overcome each obstacle people threw our way, and we will continue to do so. Appropriately allow me to read a list of all of our accomplishments from the 2023-2024 school year under the leadership of our choir director, Mr. Ziegler. August 23rd, 2023, Booker T. Washington Choir performed at MacArthur Wall. October 6th, Bradford University Choir visited Booker T. Washington. October 19th, Booker T. Washington Choir performed at Chrysler Museum Annual Fall Concert. October 24th, the choir visited VCU in an all-day choir invitational. October 27th, six Booker T. Washington Choir members joined students from across Hampton Roads to attend a full day of workshop masterclasses. October 28th, five of our six students from Booker T. Washington made it into the Virginia All District Two Chorus. November 2nd, choir sang for the 79th Virginia Council of Churches Faith Award Assembly in Newport News. November 5th, Booker T. Washington Choir was featured on the Virginia State University Fall Concert. December 13th, performance at Lake Taylor Middle School. December 19th, our winter concert. December 21st, our performance at Norview Middle School. December 22nd, performance at Richard Bowling Elementary School. There was one on February 12th, February 22nd, the 18th, the 29th, March 15th, April 19th, April 20th, April 23rd, April 26th, April 27th, and August 10th. Out of these 22 performances and events, NPS music ensembles are only required to perform three out of all of the whole year. Confidently, I can say that Mr. Ziegler is not who our principal thinks that he is. Truth and integrity is effortless. The truth will set you free, but not until it's done with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and citizens. My name is Natasha Lamell, and I am a concerned citizen, educator, and former classroom teacher at J Cox Elementary School. And I'm speaking about the EELC program. I still have deep connections to my community, and I'm here to speak about some issues concerning J Cox. One of the issues at J Cox is parental involvement, or lack thereof. Parents want to be involved in the decision-making process for their scholars, but feel they are not given a voice. Parents have not been given a needs assessment, which would inform administration of the necessities of families at J Cox. J Cox is part of the Equity, Excellence, and Learning Centers program, but the purpose of this organization has not been made clear to the stakeholders. Parents, guardians, and concerned citizens, such as myself, have tried to meet with the principal to discuss our concerns, but we have been unsuccessful. A meeting with the principal was scheduled, but was canceled on the day of the meeting by the principal. If administration is not meeting with the parents and other stakeholders, how do they know the needs of the school and its families? Parents are a vital part of the school, and input should be sought from this group of valuable stakeholders. Parents have voiced their concerns about having insufficient before and after-school care. There is no before-school care available. The current after-school program is only for an hour and a half, not nearly long enough for many working parents. And the after-school program is only offered to a limited number of students. I am concerned that another school year is just about underway. J Cox families continue to be underserved. Students' needs continue to get unmet, and nothing concrete is being presented to us. Parents, guardians, and concerned citizens want to be heard. Not only do we want to be heard, we also want to have a seat at the table when decisions are being made. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to hearing from you all.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Keenan Baskerville, representing New Virginia Majority, and I'm a community organizer. I've been organizing caregivers in the J Cox community since April. Since then, I've spoken to almost 200 people and have had as many as 22 people at a caregiver's meeting. While meeting with parents and civically, I noticed that caregivers are unaware of the EELC program. It's also apparent that though an EELC program has been adopted and is in development, parents haven't been informed or included meaningfully. In your five-year NPS strategic plan, community engagement is a goal and aims to establish, strengthen, and sustain community partnerships to support students' engagement, success, and opportunities. Community objective number one is to increase trust amongst NPS stakeholders through timely and transparent communications regarding division-level decisions through two strategies, which are to increase stakeholder engagement through the development of internal and external advisory groups, like a caregiver's group, to include parents, guardians, business leaders, community leaders, teachers, students, and so on. And two, ensure all stakeholders have knowledge of key information and decisions and have a clear process to provide input. Objective two is to review and improve partnerships with external organizations to better meet the needs of each school. The strategy for objective two is to develop and implement an ongoing school-specific needs assessment and equitably align partnerships to address those needs. As defined by your plan, stakeholders includes parents and the community. This is emphasized in your EELC strategic pillar number one, to extend enrichment opportunities, and pillar two, family and community engagement. The lack of engagement and absence of a parent or caregiver group at J Cox clearly indicates the urgency of the situation. Had there been regular needs assessments, family information sessions, and consistent meetings, it would have been evident that the creation of a before-and-after-school care program should be the top priority. Your EELC program has already allocated $425,000 to implement a before, during, and after-school program. Organizations like the Boys and Girls Club and YMCA are already in schools. Let's meet with them, let's meet with the parents, and then meet with them. I urge you to honor your commitment, your words, and take immediate action to make it a reality. Parents should be involved in this process, and a before-school care program should be established at J Cox. And I hope the extent of your engagement isn't just an EELC expo. Thank you.
Karen Johnson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sharon Johnson. I'm a retired person. I was informed about the program, and I've been in that neighborhood since 1954, as a matter of fact, on my will, because when I was a kid, I learned how to skate at J Cox, holding on to the flagpole. So in my will, they're supposed to take my casket, the hearse, around the flagpole. That's how much J Cox mean to me, okay? So I'm a concerned retired woman that's finding out that there is money, and the people in the neighborhood are not aware of it. I went out with him around the neighborhood, and none of the parents are aware of it. And I feel as though that the parents should be involved, the parents should know what's going on. We need mentors. We need after-school programs. We need caregivers. The teachers need support, because the parents are working 365. The kids, who's teaching the kids at home? Who's teaching the kids, showing the kids how to be productive members of society? Because one of those kids that's not getting attention from their parents shot and killed my son, okay? So yes, I am very interested in the parents knowing about this money and getting caregivers. We need mentors. We need caregivers. We need the parents to be involved. We need counseling for the parents, because the parents aren't taking care of the kids right, and they sending them to school for the teachers to teach them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Michael Cummings, and I live at 1034 Wall Street. I have been living in the neighborhood for five, six, seven years. I had a granddaughter, grandson, that's one grandson with the J Cox, granddaughter graduated from Booker T. Mr. Keenan, one of the organizers, came to my house and informed me. And again, I've been living in the area now for about four years, and I had no clue of any of these programs. He let me know about the after-care programs that the school lack of. Like I say, in the neighborhood, and I see the kids after school just kind of wandering around. J Cox is by railroad track, there's no, just no way for them to be safe. But if they had an after-school program, maybe they can be in the program and kind of stay off the streets. My understanding is that the Boys and Girls Club have asked to help the school, if the school would reach out to them, and they would assist the school in any way needed. I understand that after the Boys and Girls Club already have teachers, and they may be not certified, but they are knowledgeable to inform and help these kids after school. And if they have funds, have been allocated for $425,000, that could be a start to work with the Boys and Girls School, to assist them, to ensure that some of these kids are off the street. That's my concern, that they are off the street and not getting into a bad environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the school board and Superintendent Birdsong. My name is Elise McMath. I'm a former high school ESO and algebra teacher, and now I'm a community organizer with New Virginia Majority here in Norfolk. For over a year, we've been collaborating with Norfolk parents and community members to identify inequities within the school district and propose community-driven solutions. We were pleased to see Dr. Birdsong's budget for the upcoming school year included funding for the Equity and Excellence Center Pilot Program at J Cox, Ruffner, Booker T., and PB Young, all schools with significant needs. However, the program's rollout has been disappointing due to a lack of transparency and poor communication on the part of the district. The budget promised, sorry, excuse me, the planned action steps in the budget presentation outlined a needs assessment right here, and a needs assessment would provide the data that would show which wraparound services are needed to address the community's greatest needs. But there has been no evidence that indicates the school district has conducted such a needs assessment or has any plan to do so. Without that data, the school district is merely speculating and deciding for the community what their needs actually are. This speaks to the overall lack of community engagement in the rollout of this program. This is a major concern. We are also troubled by the district's narrow interpretation of what wraparound services are, focusing solely on community partners that provide literacy and STEM programs, rather than partners that could assist in addressing broader social and economic factors such as a lack of affordable childcare, healthcare, and housing. The $425,000, right here in the presentation slides earmarked for before, during, and after school programming in the superintendent's budget presentation should support affordable childcare, a critical need that has been identified by J Cox's parents. We urge the district to partner with organizations like the Boys and Girls Club to provide free childcare for parents and families and to house it directly at the school. Finally, addressing attendance and chronic absenteeism is crucial. No amount of literacy or STEM programming will be effective if students aren't attending school. As a former teacher, I understand that all the best practices and pedagogies in the world are futile until students' basic needs are being met. So in conclusion, we request the school board to ensure that, one, a comprehensive needs assessment is conducted and the results are made publicly available; two, a portion of the $425,000 is used to provide free before and after-school programs at J Cox; three, parents be included in the decisions involving the wraparound services. at J Cox; three, parents be included in the decisions involving the wraparound services that would be provided at these E E L Cs. We believe in the potential of this program and urge the school board to hold the district accountable to deliver on its commitments. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.[639.23][639.26](applause)
Good evening, school board. My name is Tremaine Spruill, junior at Booker T. Washington High School, also a member of its mighty choir program. Briefly, I'd like to acknowledge my, well, I'm sorry, our support system. The group did not want to overwhelm the rooms, so therefore Precious White and myself are here as spokespeople. I want to recognize the 15 parents, the 30 students, 13 B T W staff members, and for recent alumni of Booker T. Washington for watching and supporting us on the livestream. I've met some of you, so you should know that my statements today are grounded in integrity, factual statements, and pure student perspective. Under Booker T.'s recent leadership change, there's been a lot of mischievous decisions and unethical agendas. I understand that you support Principal Dion Garner and believe that he is passionate and an understanding principal. However, I am here today to challenge that view, not out of hatred or disrespect, but in pursuit of truth and justice. I know you all have viewed our choir as peaceful protests intelligently constructed by myself, Precious White, and two other choir members, supported by the entire group at our, I'm sorry, at our spring concert. Ultimately, it was Garner's decisions that led us to lead, I'm sorry, to lead us into the protest, I'm sorry. After our protest, only Precious White and I were called into Mr. Garner's office for a meeting. Out of all who participated in the protest, Precious White and I were the only ones suspended. However, we successfully appealed these suspensions and had them expunged, but the damage was complete. During my due process meeting with my father and assistant principal Deborah Self-Present, Mr. Garner made several alarming comments. The meeting became heated as Mr. Garner forcefully directed the conversation. When I expressed that I did not feel safe under his principalship, he responded with a careless dismissal, then leave. Such a statement is not just unprofessional, it's dangerous, especially coming from someone whose authority is new and untested. I have reported this to Dr. Griffin and Dr. Kimsey, but Garner's unintelligent comments were always justified by his status as a new principal in the district. Despite the other circumstances, this was truly an unprofessional comment, especially coming from an individual whose tenure had just begun. The system of Norfolk Public Schools must hold everyone, students and principals alike, to the same standard. In the meeting, Garner's unprofessional comments led me to send him my suspension appeal addressed "Dear Dictator." Google defines a dictator as someone who has absolute power by force or someone who acts in an autocratic manner. I am not here to slander Mr. Garner's name, ruin his reputation, or to get him terminated. I'm simply here to restore integrity and accountability in not only our school, but the system of Norfolk Public Schools. Directly, this circumstance in whole is for the simple reinstatement of our choir director, Mr. Odell Ziegler. Respectfully, Mr. Ziegler is an educator whom not only cares for his students but crafts talent and pathways for our career success, especially those interested in the music education field. And as an aspiring educator myself, I do not appreciate how this situation was handled by our leaders hired by administration. Our educational success is now lying in the hands of a principal who does not support his own teachers and does not value student opinion. I can confidently state this because in my due process meeting, while explaining my perspective on the accused incident on April 23rd, 2024, Mr. Garner continually cut me and my father off claiming that what we knew was false information. Finally, there is an important message that we are trying to send to you all. Mr. Ziegler is just not a random teacher from off the street. He's a mentor. He provides for us, his choir students, and students outside of his program. Truth and integrity is effortless. The truth will set you free, but not until it's done with you. Thank you.
Thank you.[885.01][885.04](applause) Chairman Buffalo, there's a correction. We have seven speakers, someone signed up twice, so it's just seven tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Tanner, and thank you, everyone who came to the podium to speak. We're going to move on to 3.07, approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. May I have a second? It's only four of us.
I have a second.
Thank you, Ms. Bassin. Any discussion?
Oh, go ahead. You want to say something?
Please, sir.
Oh, I was just going to ask on, I meant to ask it earlier, on the recommendation for, is that what you were going to say?
Yes.
Okay. We don't have the recommendation for the student reps.
Oh, that's fine. Sure, take your time.
Good evening, again. The administration followed Regulation V V V, Regulation of the Student Representative to the School Board, which outlines the process for selecting the school board's student, school board representative, and alternate. I am recommending that the board select Kaylani Green Ortiz as the student member of the school board of the city of Norfolk for the 2024-2025 school year. Kaylani is a senior at Moore High School and is enrolled in the school's medical and health specialties program. She has been described by her teachers as dedicated, responsible, while exhibiting exceptional character, academic prowess, and leadership skills. They further noted that Kaylani possesses a rare combination of humility and confidence. Kaylani has a wide range of committed interests, including being a member of Moore High School's hockey team, student government, a member of the Pink Club, and directing and preparing episodes for Moore High School's Podcast Club. She has received numerous accolades throughout her academic journey and has achieved at a very high level in her academic coursework. Kaylani has maintained a remarkable grade point average of over 4.0 while taking numerous rigorous advanced placement courses. She is an exceptional young lady and is able to juggle her academics and extracurricular activities, all while working as a barista at a local coffee shop. Perhaps one area that is most notable is Kaylani's numerous accomplishments, perhaps one area that is most notable regarding Kaylani's numerous accomplishments is her commitment to community service. She has accumulated over 100 hours of community service, which demonstrates her strong sense of social responsibility and willingness to give back to her community. When Kaylani was asked how she might pay forward her achievements, she responded that she plans to pursue a career in healthcare, which would provide her the needed financial resources to support family members and organizations that have supported her in being the person that she is today. Kaylani's plan is to build a healthcare clinic in Puerto Rico where most of her family resides. Kaylani also credits her teachers for attributing to her success. As in the words of Kaylani, "They were essentially the only people that believed in her," as she felt others did not because of her status as an Afro-Latina and a young woman from a non-privileged background. Again, I present to you Ms. Kaylani Green Ortiz, my recommendation for the board's student school board representative.
Wow. Thank you, Dr. Birdsong.
And I have one more recommendation.
Okay. Never mind.
I would also like to recommend that the board select Carson Rice as the alternate student member of the school board for the city of Norfolk. Carson is a senior at Granby High School. She is described by her teachers as an excellent communicator and a student who possesses strong leadership skills and who has the ability to persevere and take on new challenges. Her swimming coach describes Carson as an excellent motivator and a committed supporter and cheerleader to her teammates during all competitions. As a student athlete, Carson took immense pride in serving as the co-captain of Granby's swim team. She has also been a member of other various sports teams at the school, to include the track team and Granby crew. Perhaps most impressive are Carson's academic achievements. She is currently enrolled in rigorous coursework within the school division's international baccalaureate program, and has been able to maintain over a 4.0 grade point average. Carson is known for being the co-founder and co-president of the Period Project. She started the club at Granby High School last school year to provide free menstrual products for the school. She was able to successfully raise $5,000 to support her work. Teachers and students alike have raved about Carson's commitment to this important project. Carson is also an active member of the school's student-to-student organization, which supports military-connected students. She, too, is connected to the military, as her parents are still on active duty. Carson has lived in various parts of the world, to include Japan and Italy. She has been known to bring forth imaginative skills in creating new and innovative strategies to support the needs of military dependents. In addition to being involved in the athletic student government and the school's student-to-student organization, Carson is also gainfully employed at a local doggy daycare, and she thoroughly enjoys creating a calm and safe environment for the pets in her care. I see a lot of smiles on that. There's some folk in the audience who have spoiled dogs that go to doggy daycare every day. Carson aspires to pursue veterinary medicine as a career. When Carson was asked why she wants to serve on the school board as a student representative, she responded that this opportunity would allow her to give a voice for all students. One of Carson's teachers noted that she would be an asset to the school board, as her leadership and community engagement with athletics and service would support her being a great advocate for students. Again, I present to you Ms. Carson Rice, my recommendation for the board's student school board alternate. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussions regarding the consent agenda? Now, Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Bassin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
We'll move on.
Yay.
I'm happy to get the students passed.
Oh, I was just going to ask for clarification on, when will we meet them?
Oh, at the next business meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
September. We're going to move to 5.01, monthly financial report. Dr. Birdsong?
Yes. Mrs. Spibby has approached the podium and will provide an update for you related to our financial status.
Good evening.
Chairman Buffalo, Dr. Birdsong, members of the school board. Okay. We'll take a look at July's statement. This is the first month of the fiscal year, and this covers transactions that were recorded on or before August 8th. Looking at the chart in front of us, you can see that total general fund collections, so revenues, totaled 22.5 million and represented 5% of the general fund budget. Collections during the same period for the past two years have ranged from 3% of the budget to 7.5% of the budget. Just a reminder that these collections are based on cash received during the year, which is different than the accrual amounts that we will record for our year-end financial statements. Looking at the expenditures which are detailed in the following pages but summarized on the next, the last row of this chart, we have, we spent 22.5 million, we spent 12.6 million during July, and encumbered an additional 25.4 million for a total of 38 million, which is 8.4% of the annual budget. During the previous two years, this amount ranged from 1.9% to 4.1%, and the majority of that difference is we had the budget opened up earlier this year so that departments could get their encumbrances in, so they could start the year having the funds they needed to spend encumbered. So that's where you see that much larger amount. As shown on the bottom of this chart, at this point, or only one month in to the fiscal year, our revenues received are 15.5 million less than the amount of expenditures encumbered, spent and encumbered. If we were to just look at amounts received versus the cash going out the door, it would be a comparison of 22.5 million compared to 12.6 million, so, which would, you know, showed that the actual cash in is greater than the amount that went out, but we do have those large encumbrances. There were no general fund budget transfers exceeding $50,000 during July. That is my report summary, and I'll be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Period one is always lean. Is there any questions around the monthly financial report?
Just one.
Yes, Mr. Jordan?
On the, just, if you mentioned this already, I apologize. For the fund balance that shows 38.4 million on the far-left column, is, can you explain, is that the, and I see that it ties into revenue and expenditures, but is that fund balance the same balance that could tie to reversion funds?
It's, that fund balance is primarily the encumbrances that are still sitting in the previous year that will, that possibly will roll over into this year. So right now, we have two open years. We have fiscal '24 that ended June 30th, but we're still have transactions that relate to that fiscal year, so those encumbrances sit, you know, sit there. And once we do our hard close, which will be in September, that's when the school report is due to the state, we will see some of those funds move over to this year. But right now, it's a placeholder for the encumbrances that we believe will come over.
So just, so in the last, we, whatever the process is from the city's perspective with reversion funds, as of right now, what are we calculating that amount to be?
As of right now, that amount has not changed since, we mentioned it last month.
Yeah, just if you remember.
Which is between 9 and 10 million dollars.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Did you have a motion?
Oh, may I have a, oh, I think, motion to approve the monthly financial report.
I move that we approve the monthly financial report, subject to audit.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Ma'am, Bassin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye. Thank you.
Madam Chair, before you hit the gavel, just...
Yeah, I was going to say, we're at the end of our agenda, but I did want to just quickly open up for any last-minute comments.
Mr. Jordan?
I didn't want to do a comment, I just had a question of clarity in the, with the school board representatives. So our policy invites them to work sessions and business meetings, so I wasn't sure. I know you said that they would start at the September business meeting. Are we prepared to welcome them at business meetings and work sessions if they're available to attend?
Always welcome.
Okay, just wanted, wanted to get clarity on that. Thank you.
Dr. Martin, you have your hand up?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm just running.
Well, no further business. Our next meeting is a work session on September 4th, and so we'll see you all then. Have a good night.